This meeting for July 15. We are going to make one change to the order in which we do the agenda. We would like to move the continuation of automated renewal above the library fine fee proposal. So if I could, first order on the agenda is the approval of last week's minutes. Did anyone have any updates or corrections? It looks, oh, it looks like the councilwoman is joining us today. Okay, great. So it looks like trustee Guile's motion and then trustee Banel seconded. So we'll go ahead and vote. Great.
Five zero. I'll get that fixed on the back end.
Okay. Okay, so it looks like we're going to skip over to the automatic renewal, continuation of automated renewal.
Okay, it's on now. Hi, I'm Katie Duperry, Assistant Library Director at Escondido Public Library. This request is to approve the continuation of our automated renewal for items that are checked out. This was approved tentatively in July of 2020 during the pandemic as a way to allow folks extra time with their items. It's actually a very popular service that we provide and a lot of libraries are doing it. It basically allows people who have something checked out, we will automatically renew up to three times unless there is someone waiting for it, in which case that due date will be firm and all of that is sent via email notice to the person. So our request is to continue that.
Go ahead, John.
All right, we've had this in place about a year now, but most of it was under COVID and we're now out of COVID. I think we owe it to get, so our data is, I think, a little more clear on where this goes. We'll know that by the end of the year and I move to continue it.
Are there any other discussion topics on the agenda item?
With this and say we have continued a book or something two or three times, are we noticed that, is the data showing that we then have a lost item or is it too soon to know that?
I'm sorry, the question is, so if you have an item checked out.
And you, and it's renewed two or three times, is that leading to more lost or it's not so far? Okay, that would be my only question.
Yeah, if anything, we're having folks returning more of the items that are marked as lost. So yeah, we actually just got a huge influx last week, so.
Good.
And the more data we get, we'll know more post-COVID.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I think that our community has enjoyed it and will continue to enjoy it. And I think that that also would make fees less likely to be accumulated, right? Okay.
Yes.
I think, John, did you want to make a motion? Did anyone else have anything to say? Wonderful. Okay, let's vote.
Motion approved, five zero.
Great. So we're going to move forward with the continuation of automated renewal and that's indefinitely. So why don't we start now with a discussion on the library fine fee proposal?
I can go through the whole thing if you like, but I figured I'd kind of make some highlighted points since you have the full proposal. So for the last four years, there's been a growing movement in most American public libraries to go towards a fine-free model. It started out, I believe, at Chicago and then many libraries have jumped on board, especially in California. We have local libraries such as San Diego Public Library as well as Contra Costa County, San Francisco. What that means is simply that specifically overdue fees, just the fees for overdue materials will no longer be charged. And what will happen is, I do have on page seven of the packet the exact verbiage of what the policy would be, which would be that items that are, you know, basically they go through their renewal cycle, their automated renewal cycle that are not returned, the people who would have it, they'd have 30 days after that final due date to return those items before they get marked as lost, at which time their card would be turned off in that they would not be able to check out any additional items until that item was either returned or paid the lost or, yeah, the lost fee. So for every item that, in general, and this is still true today, is every item in our system has a cost attached to it. It's the market price. And we, if someone loses or damages an item beyond repair, they are charged the full amount of the item that's on the record in addition to $5 for reprocessing the new item that we have to order. Yes.
This is just a point of curiosity. Several years ago, I thought I'd lost a CD book set and I offered to buy a new one and they said, no, no, you can't do, this is pre-LSNS. No, you can't do that. We have to buy it and we also charge you, and the processing fee was in the 40s.
Oh, yeah, that's, I don't, I've never heard of a processing fee being that high before. It's usually the cost of the item, which if it was a book on CD, they usually average anywhere from $40 to $100 plus a $5 processing fee. So I don't know where that $40 processing fee came from. I'm unaware of that, but it might predate me. The other thing too, to point out, which is also currently the case, is we have a policy in place that when someone pays a lost fee on an item, they, you know, they pay the replacement $5 and the fee, they have one calendar year and if they find the item in that calendar year and bring it back, we refund them. Now, if it passes that one-year mark, if they find it, unfortunately, at that point, we can't take it back just because of the way our automated system works. But it allows patrons the ability that if, you know, like I looked for two months and then it found, like my daughter had it at college and she brought it back, you know, like we just, we want the items back is pretty much the bottom line. And with fine free, we're really looking to target the members of our community where money, even like most of us, a couple dollars isn't a huge burden, but for a lot of people it can be. And we find, especially in our lower-income patrons, that they tend to accumulate overdue, not lost fees, but overdue fees. And once you hit $15 on your card, you can't use your card. You can't check things out. And so we find a lot of people don't come back because they owe too many overdue fees. They may have returned all those items, but those fees stay on their card. So the main plan and goal we are trying to get to with going fine-free is to eliminate barriers to access for all the folks in our community.
Okay, so I'm sure all of us have some questions or discussion topics. I'll start. In researching fine-free, I came across a PDF that the San Francisco Public Library did where they give a lot of data on how they came to the decision to go fine-free. They surveyed nine libraries that had done this and determined that out of the nine, there were seven who had data that was reliable. And all of those seven did not experience growth or a growth in delayed books, book returns. So I think one of the concerns, you know, when I first started researching this was, does taking away fines reduce the incentive to return books? And by the San Francisco Public Library's assessment, it does not. So the incentive to return books is still there regardless of if fines exist. And that document also mirrored what Katie said in that you really are, it's really more, fines are more detrimental to the lower socioeconomic individuals of our community than it is, you know, to, it doesn't make sense to punish them when, you know, the higher socioeconomic individuals can afford to pay fines and that also isn't shown as a deterrent for higher socioeconomic individuals. So I would recommend, you know, each of you take a look at that PDF. It's very helpful. One of the things that it did recommend in the event that we do not want to go find free automatically is an amnesty period. So that would allow patrons to return their items and then we waive all of their current fees for those who do have, you know, fees right now. And then also the potential to do it in a step process where maybe we eliminate fees for children and teens. So there are a lot of options here and I'm interested to see what you all have to say.
Katie, if I look at your figures and, so we have 16,658 people who are in the overdue category, which is 24%, I think. And then I also think it's 24% of those that are over $15. So what, if I'm understanding this correctly, one of the things we hope to accomplish is to keep these people, this 24% that's over 15 in the system so they can continue to use the library because otherwise, if I understand it right, at that point they're at, their card is blocked.
That's correct. So when your card, when you owe $15 or more, your card is blocked and that means you can't check any physical items out from the library. And that we do see especially is difficult for children or, you know, parents that have many children or that check out, children's books are, you know, people want to check out a huge stack because they've got, you know, want to read to their kids. And if each of those books is a 10-cent late fee and you're a couple of days late, but you have 50 books, you know, you hit that $15 very quickly. And if you have multiple children and each of them have a card, it just, it gets kind of out of control that way. And so now you have a whole family of people who can't or won't come back to the library because they can't check any more items out. And again, the numbers that I provided, just for clarification, specifically are overdue fees. This does not count people whose cards are turned off because they have a lost item on their card. And also too, just as an FYI, I prepared this a few months ago. So the numbers were from when I did the proposal. I believe it was in May.
And this would obviously affect the lower socioeconomic community more.
Yes.
So hopefully this would help them to keep their cards from being blocked.
Yes.
And therefore they would use our library more. Okay, I think I got it.
So their card will still be blocked if they don't return the items, right?
Yes. So if they, if they don't return the item, if it hits 30 days past due, and this is after it being renewed, however many the automated renewal times is, three times, they get that 30-day grace period in which to return their item before their card is shut off and it's marked as lost. So the hope is, because we send out, we send out the notices. And so that gives them kind of that big notice that says, hey, this item is overdue. You have 30 days to return it and then your card will be turned off until you can return it or pay the replacement fee. But it isn't penalizing people for things being a few days late.
So it still works almost the same way, except that we're not charging them any money for that.
Right. We're not charging them any money for the overdue part of it. It's just if the item is lost, if they don't return the item itself or damage.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Katie, to Carolyn's point, can you differentiate between a juvenile and adult? If you wanted to charge one a fine and the juveniles not?
So that would actually, we would have to create a new infrastructure because we don't currently have separate cards for separate age groups. We don't have a child's card versus an adult card. And we would have to create those cards and set up specific parameters and then we'd have to convert people who have a specific card type into the new card type.
But you could differentiate between the material itself, right? So we don't have to have fees for children.
Ah, yeah, by CIRC type.
We can, you can change, you can change the overdue fines charged by the specific item type, yes.
Okay. Well, that would work. Okay. I'm drowning in data here. I had, I've got a report from finance in December looking at fines and fees, okay, from July 19 through November 20. And going through pre-COVID, which was July 19 through February 20, our average fines and fees were $4,038. And according to finance, about 10% of that is money they collect versus everything else. I guess the library collects and then passes it over the fence to them.
So what happens now is, this has been the case since, I believe, we switched to Polaris in 2019, August 2019. When a person owes $100 or more, they get sent to City Collections.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and so, and March, well, March COVID was just getting started. Through November, the average collections and fines and fees were 1,064. And if you throw out March, it was less than 1,000.
Right.
Because March was 3,000 and no other month even hit 1,300 after that. And then in October, November of 20, we're back to an average of 1729. So we've gone back. Anything happen in that timeframe that you can?
Yeah, so effective March 16th, we made the emergency decision to not charge overdue fines anymore during COVID because people couldn't come to the library. They couldn't return items. They couldn't check out.
Yes.
We decided to extend that until July 1st of this year because of the open-close fluctuation. People were still uncomfortable coming out. So we only just now started charging overdue fees again July 1st. So all of the data that you're going to experience from 2020, well, March 2020 until June 2021 is all simply going to be lost items. We didn't charge overdue fees unless someone really wanted to pay an overdue fee from, you know, before, which was pretty unlikely. I did prepare some numbers I pulled just from my last couple of statements. And again, John, I don't have access to the City Collections numbers, so I'm not going to have complete numbers from that department. But the average monthly amount of fines collected was around $1,000, $911. The total from February to June of this year was $4,555. And that's a combination of cash and credit transactions.
That's strictly fines.
That's strictly fines. What I did find, which might be interesting to you all, is that in June, when we reopened on the fifth, like the state reopened on the 15th. So if you look at our numbers and I can email this to you, it's in the like 150 to $200 mark pretty much February through May. And then you get to June and we hit something like $600 or something. Oh, I'm looking at the wrong column. I'm sorry. But it did. It kind of exponentially went way higher. Yeah, June, June, our credit fines, we took in $1,014. And all the months previous were around 500 in credit and cash was about the same. We've been doing less cash since we've allowed credit. But it's just telling that our numbers just kind of went through the roof once things started reopening. And you'll see on your statement next month in the statistics that you're going to see we have way more people coming into the building. Our CIRC numbers are higher. June kind of just was this push of everyone coming in. So of that average of $911 monthly, a big chunk of that is thrown off because we had such a high amount in June. So I do, I think, you know, we're bringing in around $1,000 in fines a month and that's fine, that's pretty much being fine-free because we're not, we weren't charging overdos. So we're still bringing that in. And again, whatever, plus whatever we get from collections, which I don't get that report. And then, yeah, I mean, we are, we are still seeing money coming in. People are still paying for their lost items, the processing fee. So we're still getting that.
Katie, go ahead, John.
Okay. So where am I going here? So I think then we've, we've had basically one month under our belt under the library being open, not even a month, just not even half of June, looking at what the fines are now. I don't think we, oh, boy, I don't think we've got a good number yet. Sorry about that. I don't think we have a good number yet. I'm wondering if more data might be useful to us to see how this really looks when things settle out in the next couple of months. That's just a comment.
The only concern I have with that is, so as you know, we did start charging your overdue fines again. So, and I don't have, because of the way that things are now reported through our credit system, I don't have a way of separating what part of that dollar amount for fines is overdue and what part of that is lost items. So it's harder for me to distinguish. I can try and speak with our statistics folks who do our Polaris reporting and see if he has a way to do that. But as far as the reporting that I provide to the city, like I just don't, that's why it was nice to have that year of 2020 where I can just see like all the money coming in, in this line item. It's all going to be lost item. It's not going to be overdos. And you're right. I mean, it is sparse because we had months where we were closed and we had, you know, many variables there. So it's not, it's not ideal for data collection. I just, I wouldn't, I wouldn't really know exactly how to get those as separate numbers.
Okay. What programs do we have now that maybe friends of the library or somebody else has to help people, low-income people, you know, get their fines and fees paid? Is there anything like that?
We don't have something set up with any of our foundation or friends that's something we could potentially consider.
We'll discuss that. We didn't do it last year because of COVID, but it's very popular, so we definitely would.
Explain to them what that is.
Okay. Yeah. So one of the things we do usually annually, discounting last year because of COVID, is from around Thanksgiving, November through the end of December, we do what's called Food for Fines. That's about a month and a half where folks can bring in one can of food or boxed food item that is not expired. And it removes, I believe, I think per item, it's a dollar of specifically overdue fines off their card. It doesn't obviously touch a lost item. But that money or that food is then donated to the Interfaith Community Services Bank. So we do have that annually and it is very popular. So, I mean, we do have that in place as one way that people can remove their fines.
And do you have any data on the fees for lost items? How much of that percentage-wise resides with low-income people versus?
I can pull those numbers, but I don't have it offhand.
Okay.
Did I pull it?
Katie.
I did. Okay.
You're on page seven.
You're, sorry, if you're on page seven of your agenda at the top where you have the bullet points, the last bullet point in the first section, starting with accumulation of any fines from overdue materials, it goes on to say that the majority of the patrons are within a 92025 and 92027 zip codes and they make up for 62% of the blocked patrons.
Okay. That's good information. I think it would be useful to know what percentage of total patrons are in 92025 and 27 also, to see how that plays out. You know, this is a growing trend to do this and I'm not opposed to it. I think once we have another six months of what fines really are under the automatic renewal process, you know, on a non-COVID library, we'll have a much better idea of how much money we're talking about asking City to forgive or not collect. And I still am kind of bothered by the fact that when you, let's say you go through the automatic renewal process, you pay attention to the letter and your card gets blocked. There, I'm wondering, should we have some type of redress for people that are in circumstances where they, you know, need some help?
Yeah, so we always do kind of a case-by-case discussion with the person. In the past, we've been able to set up like a payment plan where they could pay towards their balance and then be allowed to check out a couple of items at a time. We would definitely look at implementing something similar to that.
Katie?
Yes.
This is not a lot of money in my mind. How much staff time does this take? It just seems like it's an awful lot of staff time in my, in my imagination at least, compared to what it's bringing forth.
I don't have numbers for that, but I can say anecdotally, as the former supervisor of customer service and having worked in different libraries in customer service, the biggest contention that customer service staff have with patrons is over fines. The biggest arguments, the biggest hassles, the biggest people walking away in tears or staff members having to kind of implement something that, you know, like it's upsetting. It's disappointing to people on both sides. And I would say, I would actually defer to Dara because she's had more experience with that in general, but I do think it is from an emotional perspective. We're trying to serve our community. We're trying to make things as equitable as possible, especially to our lower-income folks. And that the amount of overdue, like I said, money-wise, you'd have to talk to the city, but the amount of money that is brought in to me is not worth the lack of people wanting to return to the library because they can't check out because they owe money for overdue items. At least with a lost item, if you bring it back in, that goes off your card. You know, you don't have to pay anything if you find your lost item and bring it back. But something where it's an overdue fine, you may have brought all those items back in, but you still have $20, $15 on your card because you were late. And I think that that's really, for me, where it feels like it's less of a service to our community by enforcing overdue fees. I'll let Dara speak to as far as what the staff situation is.
I can and can't. As far as numbers, I know at a different library, so previously at Manchester City Library, when I was the head of circulation, we spent about 58 cents per item we tried to hunt down. It was insane. So with the letters going out, staff time and money submitted to a company called Unique Services that used to chase down people as a collection agency, it was really more money spent in staff time and actual dollars than it was worth. The other piece of working with the patron, it is the biggest source of contention and potential loss of a community member coming into the library is over fines. So not only do you have staff quality of job experience going down from having to have these difficult discussions, you're in many cases guaranteed to lose the patron. Even if you have a system in place that, let's say, is some sort of the library assistance program so that somebody can pay off their account, well, that comes across as embarrassing and condescending to many people. So while it sounds great and in good faith, at the end of the day, keeping fines benefits no one except for maybe $1,000 a month at most. But I question, if you look at those numbers, we don't know the exact ratio of what is actually a fine and what's actually an item replacement and processing cost. Chances are, staff are going to waive a significant amount of the fines once that material is in front of them. So that's, that's my experience, is it, it's really not worth the cost of. So that's, that's my experience, is it, it's really not worth the cost of staff time to collect the fees.
Okay, I totally get all the qualitative advantages. Quantitatively, will you need as much staff if we don't have fines?
Yes.
So you're not going to reduce staff if fines disappear? Okay. So time spent is just basically overhead. I get the qualitative side of it, I totally get it. But quantitatively, it's, it's not an issue. It's just part of your overhead.
Well, except they put their energies into more productive activities, more productive, positive interactions with patrons.
Good answer.
It's just a matter of redirecting. And they're going to have a better, you know, work experience because that is, that's a part of the job that nobody really enjoys. Nobody wants to upset the community. Because we're here to serve them, we want them in. We want to do everything we can to welcome them with open arms rather than, hey, let's talk about the overdue items that you have.
So I, to boil this down, there's two huge advantages in my mind. Number one is we have an advantage of hopefully bringing more access to the library. And number two, the advantage of not having staff spend a lot of time on something that is somewhat negative in our service. It may be the most negative thing in our service. So if I understand you right, I certainly would be ready to make a motion.
Question, if I may. So are you going to implement a new program immediately? Or kind of like what Carolyn suggested, that maybe we do an amnesty? So people who have overdue fees and items, that they can return them? And maybe then implement a new policy and notify community about it?
So a bit about this process. If you, if you were to vote to approve it, you would then have to send a letter of support to the city manager? And then the city manager, I'd have to talk to Joanna. Yeah, she can explain the process. But yes, Merrick, we would, it would be progressive. It wouldn't be one day is just like done.
Okay, can I, can I add to that? Joanna, do you want to go? Do you have something?
Okay.
Okay. Qualitatively, I like this. I think there are some things that need addressing because you still have apparently low-income people who are still being held to account for lost or, or damaged items. And, you know, we helped them on the fine side, but we're not helping them on the other side. But I would, I'm not interested in going to the city manager and saying, I want to get rid of fines. And he says, how, well, how much is that worth for a year? Well, I have no idea, I don't have enough data yet. I don't want to do that. I want to get some more data first in, in, in the post-COVID world with our three renewal, automatic renewal thing and see what fines really are. And, and maybe do a little bit more digging on where they really come from and how they really affect the poor people. And, and then make a more informed decision. That's what I'd like to see.
So just a little bit of procedural process. Some of you, not all of you, were a part of the recommendation to eliminate media fees that happened about a year or so ago. And the way that worked was very much like this. Essentially, I think John was the one who initiated that conversation, but it was supported by staff. There was a discussion amongst the board and a vote to move forward with a recommendation. And then collectively as a team, sort of initiated by the president, a letter is drafted to the city manager and then approved by the rest of the board. And that goes to him for review. And then he certainly will want to vet this idea through the council. It is such a small dollar amount, as we've been talking about, that I think very likely that would be a relatively simple conversation. But especially since he is literally like 10 days on the job, he's definitely going to want to give them some insight into this process and the analysis that's gone into it. And then he would probably make the ultimate decision because it's within his purview to, to make that choice.
Yeah, that, that's, yeah, that was the process we took, except maybe a pre-meeting or two. But I'm not comfortable with the data I have to go talk to the city manager and fully support this because I don't have all the information I need and there's parts of this I still have problems with. And, and not, not because we're losing money.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. And, and that's why there's five of you. So that's why you're having this discussion now and you share your concerns and questions and you'll take a vote. And if there is a majority that's ready to move forward now, then it really just takes a majority vote to move this forward. If, if you don't have a majority vote to move it forward, you can give staff direction to go back and collect more data, revisit this in a timeframe that you specify and see how the vote shakes out at that time.
So part of the investigation by the city manager can be to determine and ask from staff what the numbers are with regard to the fees, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
And just to Katie's point, it is challenging, not only from their Polaris side of things, but also in the way that we collect this data and how it's coded in our financial system. There's essentially one code that, you know, 30 different categories of fines and fees all come into when it comes into the city's coffers. So it is, we would have to set up a system, starting effectively now, moving forward, to be able to isolate out and, and code those a different way. And I don't know how that would interface with Polaris, but the way that that stuff is now being reported is in lump sum. So it is challenging to, to pull out what are the actual overdue fees and what are lost item fines, processing fees, fees for interlibrary loan, fees for if someone were to lose a Chromebook, for example. There's, there's a whole section of the city's fee schedule that are devoted to library fines and fees. And that's all funneled into one lump sum that gets reported to the city. So just, you know, optics on that.
So there is, there is a way to make assumptions about, you know, the year of 2020 versus previous years, right? So in 2020, all of the fees listed are specifically for lost items, right?
So Joanna brings up a good point that I completely forgot about, that interlibrary loans as well as lost library cards are, like if you get a new library card, it costs $2. Those two, those two fines are also part of that. Now, you can assume pretty confidently that we weren't doing interlibrary loans during COVID. We started doing it, I believe, in February. So you will have some of that. And we only, and I can extrapolate that. I provide you with a list of how many interlibrary loans are processed monthly. So we could use some assumptions with that cost. But there's no way for me to look at how many replacement cards are paid for. I'd say that 2020 to about last month, you're going to probably get the purest data you, you can possibly get of it pretty much just being lost items and replacement.
Okay, great. And so if we were to assume, you know, we had lower circulation for 2020, if we were to scale that to the previous year's circulation and make comparisons, then we can probably deduce how much fines would have been for 2020. And then that would give us an understanding of what kind of scale we're looking at. Two to three, one to three for fines versus fees.
It's just, it's hard to come up with a very specific
Correct.
number-like formula. Because your overdue charges are different per item type. So it's a dollar per day for DVDs, it's 10 pet cents per day for adult books, it's 5 cents per day for kids' books. Your item cost is completely different, too. One book might be $40 replacement fee, one book might be $15 replacement fee. And there's no, there is not an easy way to get that breakdown out. So you can, you can make those extrapolations and, you know, like it's better than nothing. But I just caution you that it's very difficult to pull those exact numbers out.
Right, we'll never pull the exact numbers out, right? So the only thing that we do have to work with are those extrapolations. For me personally, I, I, I am ready to move forward. I don't think that three more, six more months of data is going to give us any, like, more insight as to whether this is a good idea for our community or not. But if we do need to provide the city manager with our assessment based off of data and numbers, I think that extrapolation would be appropriate.
Absolutely.
Look, could I suggest that we do what we did when we were having a, a active discussion last meeting on, on reading? Let's do some analysis with staff over the next four weeks and come back and, and look at this again, possibly with exactly the same policy, maybe with some minor modifications and, and some more extrapolations and, and better data than we have now. And I don't think 30 days is going to kill us one way or another.
I don't agree, John. I, I think we are developing a, a habit of moving, kicking the can down the road. And this, to me, is a very insignificant amount of money. And I believe I'm ready to move forward. I think that with some things, we need tremendous analysis and analytics. This, to me, is simple. I don't want staff spending a lot of time on this. So I would like to make a motion that we accept the library fine fee proposal. And we'll see if we have a second and votes and so forth.
I just want to quickly give my opinion. I also agree with Ron that serving the community, making sure the patrons have access to the library and staff spending their time on productivity and positivity with the patients is more important than more data. At this point, I'm ready to move forward. I'll second it.
Would you like to take the vote?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Sure, no worries. Motion approved, 4-1, Schwab No.
Thank you.
You going to do the budget overview?
I can, yeah.
Okay.
Do you have the extra ones I printed?
Next on the agenda is the collection development budget overview.
It's okay, yeah. So I, I put the draft budget in the packet. Two days after we sent the packet, they released our funds. And there was a few changes and we printed out the updated version. And I had a few notes on it for everyone. It's, it's this sheet that's in color. For the majority of things, the, the dollar amounts were very close. So you had asked us, I think, John, a few months ago to review our collection development budget. So this is the official 2021, 2022 fiscal year collection development budget. Annually, we receive 200.
Are you executing this right now? Or is this for?
This is started July 1st.
July 1st, okay.
Yeah. So annually, we get $245,000 for collection development. A percentage, as per the contract, goes towards the team, the centralized collection team. So we have, in real dollars, $238,050 to spend. So this sheet that I printed, I'm sorry, it's very small, has that breakdown with the more up-to-date data. A few things that changed, just as an FYI, is we did have, as always, we have increases in cost for our databases, our, our paid digital offerings. So that accounted for a few, like, I think $500 in increase.
Is that a predictable increase each month or each year?
It's, it's predictable within a certain percentage, yes.
Okay.
So there's some of them, we have like two or three databases where we're locked in and we're always going to pay the same amount for the life of the database, which is awesome. But there's about three of them where, over the last few years, where since I've been viewing the budget, have gone up between anywhere from $50 to $100 a year. So over, overall, depending on what we subscribe to, we get an increase of between $500 and $1,000 usually every year. And that's pretty expected. We, we just want to make sure we're budgeting accurately. Also, at the end of last fiscal year, we decided to add a database, which costs $2,000, so that increased. And it's really awesome because it provides tutorials for folks on how to use a lot of our resources. So there's videos and how-tos on how to do pretty much anything. So I got off on a tangent. But in any case, so this is our updated budget. Also included on this one, that wasn't on the one before, is the discretionary funding, which is the funding that our local staff onsite in the library spends on purchase suggestions, replacement items, specific things. And I did also do a breakdown on the right side. I know there's been some questions lately amongst the board about digital resources versus print resources. And so I did a breakdown and we have budgeted for 2021, 2022, $53,000 for eBooks, e-audiobooks and streaming media. Of that total budget of $238,000, that's about 22% of the budget. And analyzing the data over the last fiscal year, our digital circulation accounted for about 17% of our total circulation. So 17% of the circ, 22% of the budget, we've built in a little bit for increase, but it's pretty close to what we're actually circulating. We're trying to make sure that that matches as best we can. And I would like to point out that between the e-materials, which we have complete purchasing control over that budget, as well as a discretionary funding, we have about 30, we have about 30% of the total budget is local library staff purchasing.
Okay, I have two questions. We're already two weeks into this, correct?
Yeah.
Ken, and I know we've, we're just coming out of COVID and you guys were a little busy in June. I think it would be really useful to have this report no later than the June meeting in, in future years.
I can get you, just as I did in this document, I can get you the estimate. It's just that in that last few weeks, we do some tweaking based on the final, final funding of the year before.
Like, for instance, this year, following up on COVID, a lot, we had a lot encumbered that the orders weren't going to be processed in time. So we have this influx of money coming back. So then we have to figure out, okay, how are we going to spend this to make sure we spend?
Well, but that's a one-off.
It's amazing how much it changes in the last three weeks of June. If you want an accurate statement, I would go with the July meeting because that way we've closed everything out.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. I'm, I'm just talking like a businessman, that I'm, I'm approving a budget that's already in place. I'm just rubber-stamping it and, and that's not something I like to do.
Okay.
Okay, we can provide it later. But I also wanted to make the caveat as well that throughout the year, as needs change, we do have a lot of flexible ability to, to move things to another line item. For example, if a bunch of great nonfiction biographies came out, we'll move money from another line item. So this is our projected budget of what we expect to spend. But at the end of the year, it will have changed drastically from what are initially our plan was.
So I'm, I'm also with John. I think that we do need to see it before, just as a preliminary projection, so that we have an idea. And then too, based off of your collection plan, you do, or it says that you, you reference Library IQ to make these. So I think what I would like to see is, in the June meeting, how Library IQ influenced your budget decisions for this.
We're, we're talking the
Relative use, right?
Relative use, yes.
You use.
Would it be possible for us to present in May? Because I think it would be incredibly beneficial for us to have Diane Drake, who's our collection development person, on like a Zoom so that she can kind of explain some of that. And then June is like her crazy crunch month for everyone closing their fiscal year.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think May is fine.
Yeah, fine, the earlier the better.
Okay, we'll, we'll get, we'll get that on the agenda for May.
Okay, and we talked in a couple, my second question, we talked a couple of meetings ago about having a baseline of relative use, establishing that. When, and I can't remember when we said we were going to do that.
We didn't. I was hoping to do it as early as now and then found out that it was, be incredibly cruel for me to ask Diane in the end of the fiscal year to do that. So in the next few months. So I will be following up with her in the next couple of weeks and I'll find out her availability. And I promised you, if not in person, a Zoom meeting from her where she can go over Library IQ and answer your questions.
Should we assign like a target by, by date?
I would, oh, sure.
Maybe by the? What do you think?
Well, whatever, whatever they can do.
Okay. Okay, no, let's say no later than October ideally. And if for some reason she has an explanation why it has to be a month later, I'll explain it to you guys next time. Okay.
Okay, and also, again, this is just a business guy. Usually on a budget, I want to see what I spent this year and Usually on a budget, I want to see what I spent this year and plus your projection for next year, not just this year, not just the projection.
So that's-
In future years.
Yeah, that's one of the things where, as she said, like, I can get that to you at the same time as the projection, but it's not going to be completely spent out, because we still have two-
Totally used to that, where we're just estimating the rest of the year. Understand. Yeah.
So, sorry, you want the previous year, right?
The previous year. In other words, if this, in the ideal world, we would have been looking at this one or two months ago, and we'd have actuals for this year versus projections for next year.
Right, so in May, we would have the Library IQ, right? Let me know if I'm saying what-
Library IQ, yeah.
Yeah, that's it, okay. The Library IQ, we would have your spend to date-
Right.
For each of these categories and your projected spend, which would be your next year's budget.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Does anyone want to comment or make a motion to approve this year's budget? Motion by Schwab, seconded by Gorni. Let's vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Okay, great. Moving on to the review of the collection development policy and plan, which we discussed in depth last time.
Yes, so I will try not to go as in-depth this time. I'm hoping all of you had a chance to review it and might have some things that stand out or do not. But I just want to touch on the three corrections we made and see what you thought of those. As far as responsibility for selection, we made more of a reference to our staff working with a centralized collection management team. Is the way that that was reworded okay with everyone? That is on page 13 of 31.
Yeah, that's fine, familiar.
And then the other correction was to update the review. So the next review will be July 15th of 2021. Wait, no, that's today. So today, we're reviewing it, so last reviewed date is updated. And then our next update was at page 17. At point number five, "If not satisfied with the decision, the complaint may appeal to the Escondido Public Library Board of Trustees, which has the authority to elevate the decision to the Escondido City Council."
reasonable.
That's fine. Okay. For which one?
For the plan, because the only change is just the copy, paste of the same thing.
Yeah, so for the responsibility of collection development on the plan rather than the policy, we just put the same verbiage underneath the responsibility for selection. So it was just a simple copy and paste from one to the other. So those were the bullet items I had to, on my list to correct or review from last time. Was there anything else that stood out on the plan? So then I guess it's up to you guys if you think it's worth approving.
I move approval. I move approval.
Motion by Giles, seconded by Benel.
Approved, 5-0.
Okay, great. The next item on the agenda is the Library Board of Trustees' monthly trustee reports.
So this is an idea I had in terms of engagement. So I know you guys get a lot of inquiries from people in the community, whether it be a complaint in this room or things you hear from maybe a watchdog member. I would like to invite you to, and I don't, how, the timetable on how often can depend on what works best for you, because maybe each of you does a couple reports throughout the year's worth of months or of meetings. But what would be great is to have you come in and talk about your experiences. Like, if you need me to come up with suggestions, I'm happy to do that. But even to pick a book that you'd like to read, look it up on our catalog, and if it's not there, coming into the library and making sure staff either find a way to get it for you in another format through interlibrary loan, a purchase request. It's a chance for us to not only engage you, but get your evaluation back. Is staff as friendly as we think they are? Are you enjoying your library experience? And can you speak to it when community members come to you and say, "The shelves are bare," or whatever it might be? This would give you a chance to engage and get back to us on what your experiences are and help us all speak to those concerns that we receive on occasion.
I just wanted to add to this, that I really love the suggestion when Dara brought it to me, because it really models what we do with city council. At the end of each city council meeting, the council members have an opportunity to report out on the subcommittees they sit on, you know, events that they're associated with within the community. And I really saw a lot of parallels between what she was proposing in this recommendation to you. And I have said this many times to you guys over the years, but one of the most important roles that you play as trustees is advocacy. And so this is really an opportunity to share what you're doing in terms of advocacy. It can be as simple as having a conversation with your neighbor about, you know, the Flipster app that you downloaded and that you're reading magazines on your phone. I just had that conversation with someone, so that's why it's fresh in my mind for me. But that's the kind of thing that, they're super simple actions, and you guys are so well-connected within this community. You're Rotary members. You are business professionals. You are moms. You are dads. You have so many opportunities in PTA meetings, whatever it happens to be as you're going about your normal life, to have a conversation about the library and get more eyes on what the library is doing. Because one of the biggest challenges that we face every single time we talk about, what's the biggest challenge the library faces, is getting people to understand that we're here and what we offer and all the great things that we bring to the community. So I just really wanted to, you know, pat Dara on the back for having this idea and sort of draw that parallel between this recommendation and kind of the standard practice of what city council does. Thanks.
We always did this in my school district when I was superintendent. It doesn't have, the board shouldn't feel that they have to make a formal presentation. It's kind of like Joanne was saying, "Well, I went to this PTA meeting as a board member just to sit in." Like, yesterday, I was in the library. I like to go walk around and see how many people are using the computers and look at the shelves and just for my, you hear this stuff, but just for my own viewpoint, I like to do that. That's just something that- So when we get a chance, it doesn't have to be that we have to have data or we have to have something on a PowerPoint. You just simply say what you've done. At Rotary, the other day, I talked about the fact that we now have people at the library who, what do we call them, instead of, they're not guards, they're rangers. See, that all came from Rotary. There was a man there who used to be on this board that was just really upset over the way the library looked and the people laying on the ground and so forth. And he kept, every meeting, he would bug myself and Elmer. And so finally, we, of course, had to bug Joanne. And then the good assistant city manager came up with this idea, and it's been fabulous. But that would be the kind of thing. And it doesn't take 30 seconds to report it out, but it lets everybody kind of know. That's what we used to do.
Go ahead, John.
I would like to see, I don't want to just have a show-and-tell, but, you know, that type of thing that Ron mentioned is obviously important. I would like to find a way to have better communication between staff and the board, just so we know what is going on. I learned at our weeding meeting earlier this week more about what's going on with shelving than I ever knew. And it was, it's great to know it. But it's something that I think we all should be aware of and could have been aware of, well, even last year. And I'm sure there's other things that staff is doing that we're just not aware of. And as, you know, we're here to help things work between the library and the community and make sure everybody is doing the best they can and receiving the best service that is possible. And anything we can do to learn more about what's going on at the library helps us in that regard. So if we can use this idea somehow as a catalyst to make that happen, I think it'd be good.
Well, I'd also like to get back into the habit. Prior to COVID, we had started having different department heads or different staff members come and talk. And that kind of fell, well, that totally fell away during COVID. Our meetings were very infrequent at that time, and honestly, I don't think we knew exactly what to present on at that time. So that's something that we'll be bringing back next time, well, starting with our next meeting. Because I do think that that is the best way to convey to the board, is to have a different staff member presenting, whether they're talking about literacy, children's programs, or school connections, whatever it might be. So we will start that back up.
I think that the idea is good. I think that it, you know, gets back to what Joanna was saying, that we are advocates for the library and its services. I would like for it to be, like Ron said, I guess, a little less formal. You know, it could be an open period that we have at the end of each meeting where not all of us have to speak, because at the end of the day, it's not a contest as to our involvement or, you know, how we're doing as board members. I think that we're measured by the value that we bring, and that value is very diverse. So I'm for a segment at the end of the agenda of, you know, board members being able to share, you know, an experience or something that they're doing or a conversation that they've had.
And Carolyn, just to add to what you're saying, I occasionally would have board members just say, "I'll pass." And so they, it doesn't, you don't necessarily have to say something every month. But it didn't happen often, but people didn't feel, they didn't feel bad about saying, "I'll pass."
I think it's a great idea, Dara. Thank you for bringing it to us. One of the other things that I noticed on social media, you guys do a good job of getting the information out of the virtual things that you have going on and the crafts with the kids. And you guys are all over social media, and I see that. And I think that all your social media posts should have automatically five shares from board members. You know, like, that's another way we can support you guys. And also, the events that you guys do live streaming to, you know, I might not be interested, but my friends and family might. So, you know, gathering our friends and family's experiences on what they've been to on your social media channels, too, would be something that we could bring back also. I love the idea of walking in and then just quizzing the staff on something that we're interested in to learn more. But I also think, you know, to reach a younger generation, that we should have a social media presence supporting you as well.
Any motion?
We need a motion. All right, motion by Gorni, seconded by Benel.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Well, with that, would anyone like to discuss? I'm sorry? Sure. With that, and us just approving the monthly trustee report, would, Virginia, would you like to speak, or John, to the things you learned about weeding?
I would defer to Virginia's analysis.
After I read my notes, there was so much that I learned. So on July 12th, John and I sat down with Dara, Katie, and Aspen Hill, who's the library operation manager, to learn more about the weeding process. Aspen went into great detail and gave us some great information. There is a monthly weeding schedule where she focuses on one section at a time, like children's, young adults. Dara, please feel free to correct me if I misunderstood anything. A weedless report is then created, and materials that have no circulation within three years are added to the report. She also adds the following information to the report: the last time it was checked out, the publication date, the lifetime circulation stats, and when the item was added to the collection. And she also researches any anomalies. She does extensive research to try to understand why the item's not circulating. Sometimes items are missing. Sometimes the catalog information is incorrect. And sometimes the damaged worn books are replaced. Or another example of necessary weeding is publication dates. New, newer publication dates need to replace older publication dates. And for example, test prep books that would be important to replace. Some exemptions from reading include certain collections, award-winning books, well-circulated series, historical and cultural interest, automotive, and that's to do with Cruze and Grand here in Escondido. They usually keep those kind of things on the shelves. And Aspen did mention if there was a section that was up for weeding and it had enough room on the shelves, she would choose to skip the weeding for that section if there's enough on the shelf, room on the shelf. Aspen meets with Dara and shares the weeding report, and then they share that with the department. And Aspen makes a recommendation of which book should be placed and gives recommendations on what needs to be updated. And the department managers have the information they need to try to circulate those items. The department managers receive quarterly reports for items that are not circulating, and then they may choose to market those items. So they'll either put them front-facing on the shelves or put them in the front of the library on the "you may have missed" section. So there's plenty of options for those to get noticed by patrons to pick up. And it seems to me that the library staff does everything they can to understand why those items aren't circulating. Aspen does great research in, like, what's coming up. For example, I didn't even think about this, like, if there's a popular series on Netflix coming up, she'll know that those books are going to be popular, and she'll get those on the shelves. I think it's important to note that Aspen is, also manages the Pioneer Room, and the Pioneer Room does not do weeding, rarely does weeding. So she doesn't weed for the sake of weeding. She does a lot of extensive research on, and tries to understand the reasoning behind it not circulating and getting it out there. So it really, in my opinion, it really, I really understood that just because a book is not circulated for three years does not mean it actually gets weeded out. There's so many factors that are thought about, researched, and trying to get that book out. So it really made me feel comfortable with the with the operations in place for the weeding practices. I think that's about it. That's all I have. I just appreciate the time with your staff. I learned a lot. So it made me feel very comfortable, and I think you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you. And that was a total aha moment that, for me, just now, like, the way you stated that, it's definitely one of those forest through the trees. We live in the trees, so when you ask that question, I can't come up with that response. But now that we have explained it, and your response was absolutely perfect, or your explanation was absolutely perfect, and now I'm kicking myself, like, how come I couldn't say that when I was asked before? Thank you very much. That was a great summary. Thank you.
Just to add a few more logistics comments, because that's part of my background. I found out that during the meeting, at the end of the meeting, I asked some questions, and apparently, we had 80-some-odd shelving units, give or take, that were- and apparently we had 80 some odd shelving units, give or take, that were sorting shelves, where stuff, newly bought stuff returned, patrons returning books they checked out, were put in these sorting section and then taken out of that section and put back on the shelves. And time spent on the sorting section meant that it was unavailable to patrons, period. So getting rid of that process, which is basically warehousing 1A, you know, you get the stuff on the shelf so the customers can get to it, caused the emptying of 80 or so shelving units. And even though a lot of it went maybe to other places on that floor in that area, a lot of it also went to other sections of the library. So it freed up a lot of empty space. And that was not connected to weeding at all, but it, it made the shelves look a little emptier. And Katie shared some history that a massive weeding was done in 2017, pre-LSNS, to catch up on weeding that hadn't been done for apparently many years. And so, you know, it's, it's an ongoing thing. And if I remember correctly, the city's old criteria was books that hadn't circed in two years. Is that correct? And now we're using three. And that's just the target population to look at. And they're looking at those books as just as much to replace damaged books, to find lost books, you know, a book that, that's somehow in the wrong place or misidentified, this is how those are found and put back in the collection correctly. So there's a lot of good things that come out of this. It's not, it's not as a couple people proposed that it was. And I thought it was an extremely well-done process. And finally, the person in charge of, responsible for improving circulation is the person responsible for weeding. So that's, from a business perspective, that's great because you've got the responsibility for having good stuff on the shelf in the hands of the person that's responsible for weeding. It's not two people being counterproductive. That's great.
I also would like to add one more comment that I forgot to mention. I think it's really important to note that when the community members brought their concerns to us a couple of months ago, they weren't wrong that the shelves looked empty. And I, that was also explained to us just recently when John and I met with the staff, was that that was a perfect storm that happened. And I think it's important to note that during COVID shutdown, you guys did kind of a deep cleaning and really did a higher than usual weeding practice. And it allowed you guys to like go through every book, see which ones really needed to be replaced and damaged. And then you ordered more publications, but publications was stalled because of COVID. So even though you were weeding out and you were going to replace, they weren't there at the same time. Also on top of that, you have MVPs, which I'm thinking stands for most valuable patron, who check out 100 books at a time, and then they also may make the shelves look empty. So all of those happened at the same time that the community members were visiting and brought their concerns. So I understand where they were coming from.
I just wanted to clarify on the MVPs because we previously had had a borrowing limitation of 30 items at a time, and we dropped that during curbside originally. And it's gone well. We're not seeing a bunch of books missing, so it stayed in place.
And then I think I'd like to add too that now that the Friends of the Library bookstore is open, we will likely avoid all of the books out in the front. And now people can make a second home for the books and in doing so, fund the Friends of the Library, right?
The money comes back to us for all of the library programs.
Okay. Anyone else? No? All right. I would like to adjourn this meeting of the Escondido Library Board of Trustees. Oh, I'm so sorry. We have the director's report. Oh, I didn't see it.
So rather than go through all of the stats, I'm just going to say, you know, we're, we're back in business, trying our new full hours. One change I have made on our goals charts that comes from the last strategic plan, I'm going to start highlighting in bold the things that were new or specific to this month. And I'm just going to go over those quickly since Carolyn's in a hurry to go. No, I'm just kidding. One of the things that we had just this month, we, in providing programs, we had a seed swap. And our seed swap, and also it was a combination seed swap and succulent swap. And we had 63 participants in that on a Saturday afternoon, which was great. In addition to new programs, Artsy Adult Crafts and our Backyard Birding Club, which was a first time. And that was an online program and there were 24 attendees for that one, which was pretty good for a first program. Additionally, our writing competition with our Escondido, Escondido Writing Group had 22 submissions this year. Previous year was eight, so it went up quite a bit. So that's pretty exciting. We're hoping that has something to do with the addition of Bibliophile, but we'll see. Bibliophile is a new database we have that allows you to read author-published works that are curated by librarians and through library journals. So there's a certain level of quality there. And then also allows you to publish your own work if that's something you're interested in. We've also invited businesses from the community to attend programs. We have completed our partnerships with Read Local, Shop Local for the year ahead in 2021. And we've, let's see, we're no longer limited in building capacity, which I think you're all aware that we are back to a full opening. And in July, our Literacy Learning Center reached 107 students. 11 were new just in the month of July. And that's all I have for brand new updates, other than what's already written there for you, our program attendance and such. Do you have any questions?
Dara, can you tell us how the new hours are working out? And have you heard anything about Sundays?
I have not gotten one complaint about Sundays, which is interesting. Both San Diego City and San Diego County are not reopening any of their branches. We were waiting to hear from San Diego, well, on Sunday, sorry. I should specifically on Sunday, they are not reopening, which I was waiting on county because there was, they were still knocking around the idea of being open at some locations on Sundays. We are, I mean, it's still early to guess, but one thing that's really interesting is Tuesday has been our busiest day. Typically, I think of Mondays, people returning all of their stuff after the weekend. Tuesday is our high point and Saturday is our low point, which is interesting because, you know, it's Saturday. That's when people have the most availability. So we'll continue to watch, but surprisingly, we haven't heard any complaints about Sunday. It's still early to see how the evenings are going to work because we haven't started programming. Our in-person programming will return in August. So that's when, you know, we hope to target a couple adult programs and have the actual book clubs in the library itself. So that's something we'll have better stats on in the future.
I'm wondering if the farmer's market on Tuesday brings more people in the area. What does your numbers look like on Friday since Cruze and Grand just started?
I, you know, I'll have to see. Let me find out and I can email that to everyone. Because, I don't know. Because we, that is something we've worked closely with and it does seem like whenever you increase foot traffic in that general area, that, that's a big help.
Dara, is the Turrentine Room open? I was there yesterday, it wasn't open. Is it still a storeroom or is it going to open up for the community?
Well, it'll open up for programs in August. As far as opening up for renting, I'm going to bug Katie for that answer.
Okay. So part of what happened was in September of last year, we got the capital funding budget to replace all of our public printers. At that same time, we bundled that with the, the room reservation software system that is part of that, replacing our outdated system we previously had. Because it was COVID and we couldn't have anything in those rooms, the room reservation part of that did not get set up. So I am taking the next two months to work on with their staff to get the pricing put in correctly, the room reservation policy on their website, and train staff on how to use the public side of the room reservation software because our workflows are going to change just a bit from our old system. So my hope, I'm targeting January, there's a good chance it'll be available for public rental previous to that, but I don't, I can't accommodate like any kind, like I can't account for any kind of issues that may happen between our vendor. So I'm just, I'm saying January is my target date for people to be able to reserve the room for the public.
I'm happy that you're doing that. Some people go to the library, that's the only time they ever go to the library, is when they go to that room for some kind of a community meeting. And so I'm pleased that we're going to have it back in January.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Also, just as a quick aside, the Friends of the Library Bookshop opened back to the public on Tuesday, the 6th of July. And they're only open 10 to 1 because they're testing it out as far as just like kind of a soft relaunch, but it has been packed. People are over the moon, excited they're back. They'll start, in case anyone asks you, they will start accepting donations again on August the 2nd. So if anyone has items they need to donate, we're asking right now for just two boxes at a time until they can kind of get their, their like in and out flow back to normal. But it has been very, very, very positive with the public and with staff as well.
I, I asked this before and you're going to be sick, Dara, of me asking this. I'm very interested in this accredited online high school partnership. I would like to do anything we can to help some people who were not able to get an education. And so I keep asking and I just wondered if we are going to partner with the high school neck, next school year?
I think the biggest thing, we've been looking at it as a place, once we have the right student, because there is that financial commitment. With COVID and our literacy center, we haven't really had that chance to have someone that fits, fits the mold that we're looking for. We're always looking for possibilities and it is not specific necessarily just to our location. So I think a lot of people do go to San Diego County, who has a bigger, bigger program for that and librarians designated for homework help and assistance with the program. We have talked about that. I've spoken to Joanna about it and it is something the city would be interested in supporting as well. It's just, again, finding two people that are going to go through the entire program.
And could you update us on our fabulous literacy program? How is, since COVID, how is that coming back?
So that's going to come back as a hybrid. So many of our adult learners find it beneficial to do the program through Zoom because they don't have to factor in their travel time, and especially if they're going straight to work. Or some of them might be at work, but they can take their lunch hour to, you know, do some of their assignments and work with our tutors. So that will continue. There will be some, I think, that want to come back and be physically in the same room with their tutor, but it sounds like it's going to be almost a 50-50 split on how that lands.
And, and most of the tutors have returned?
Yes. Yeah. I mean, our, we didn't lose people over COVID at all. And for, for some people, I think it works better to have a Zoom meeting with earbuds in because they're focused in and can concentrate. I think it just depends on the learner, but it's actually worked out for the positive as far as making it more accessible to people that might not have had travel time or have been able to fit it into a workday and now they can.
There are some good things that are going to come out of COVID.
Okay. If there's nothing else, then we will now adjourn this Library Board of Trustees meeting.